Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call this public hearing to order at 6:00 PM. Comments on the change of the liquor license? Anybody out there wanna make any comments on this public hearing? Of moving the liquor license? Come on up, Barbara. That's what it's for. State your name for the record and give us your opinion.
I guess I don't know where that liquor license is moving from or toward.
It's moving to the other end of town, am I correct? Duane, it's moving out to the Chevron across from the Shell?
To the end of South Phillips 66.
And that's on that end of town though, right? By the Shell over there?
Yeah, it's across the street from Shell.
By Taco Bell, there you go.
Okay. We have a DWI program here in our community, and I was looking at all of the places in Milan and Grants that we sell liquor. In the village of Milan, we've got four places that sell liquor in that small village. In Grants, I think we have nine or ten in Grants. And for a county of 30,000 people, we are the place to go for liquor. And yet, our DWI program is inundated. They have so much that they have to do, and we're not controlling it at all. We're just expanding it. And I realize it's a transfer, but we do have to address this at some point in time.
Okay, I'll address that right now. When I was growing up in this town, there were 52 bars in this town. 52. We've cut it down to nine. And now, we're gonna cut it down to where there's not a single bar open in this town. Not one bar. They're all walk-in stores to buy liquor. That's my comment on that, what you just said.
Well, I'm just commenting that we have a serious problem.
And I understand that.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Anybody else out there wanna talk about this liquor license? Moving it and shutting down a bar? Come on up, Duane. Identify yourself for the record and make your statement, buddy.
Hello, my name is Duane Taylor. I'm with Noel Outlaws. Let me give you a little, you know, story of what we're doing. It's being transferred over to Phillips 66. The proposal is, I mean, nothing's done yet. What the plans are is, we're incorporating a Pizza 9 restaurant inside Outlaws. We are going to be kid-friendly. We're gonna be all ages. We're gonna be a local-themed sports bar with a beer and wine license. We're going to change the name from Outlaws, but what we're doing is we're letting the community pick the name. Something that's, you know, pertains to the local area. We're gonna decorate the bar with local athletes. We're gonna feature Sable County athletes. We're projected to employ, from what we have now, 22 additional people. We'll be doing delivery in the future. We'll start with the drag-up window.
Do we have the council got any questions?
Duane, yeah, you gonna, what are you gonna do with the old building?
That's what you said, you're putting Pizza 9 there?
We're putting Pizza 9 in the memorabilia.
Nick?
Thank you.
Sounds like a great idea.
We're actually asking local people, young or old, to bring, to provide the memorabilia that we're gonna hang on the walls and feature.
All right, I think that's a great idea. We need something like that for the kids to go to. You will have checking IDs, that's normal and everything else, though. But it's open to the public.
It's open to the public.
I think that's an asset to our community, and I'd like to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Duane.
All right, thanks.
Anybody else out there got any concerns about this liquor license moving from Noel Outlaws to Outlaws 66?
Good-to-go store.
Come on up. State your name for the record, please, and give us your opinion.
My name's Ryan Mickel, and I'm here on behalf of Good-to-Go Stores. You know, we look at this as mutually beneficial transaction. As we purchase the liquor license, that's what's gonna allow these, I'm assuming they're gonna be allowing this money to help them do what they're trying to do. In turn, we have plans for the convenience store there to remodel, rebuild that convenience store and make it a top-notch store like our other convenience stores are in New Mexico. Good-to-go has 57 convenience stores located throughout the West. We have 19 stores in New Mexico. And we've been going through rebuilding those stores, and we intend, if we get this license, to rebuild this location and improve that facility as part of our offering there. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions that also have.
Questions? Anybody got questions? Thank you. Anybody else out there? Comments on this liquor license getting moved? I'll entertain a motion to move this liquor license from Noel Outlaws to Good-to-go Store at Phillips 66. Make a motion?
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez?
Yes.
Councilor Pariya?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll call this meeting to order at 6:07 PM. Roll call.
Eric?
Present.
Councilor Reynolds?
Here.
Councilor Vazquez?
Here.
Councilor DeSaro?
Here.
Councilor, uh, Pariya?
Yes, here. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the agenda? I didn't see a good one. I want to take that. Put the kimono on, sorry. Second.
I second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez? Councilor DeSaro?
Yes.
Councilor Pariya?
Yes.
Citizens to address the counsel, Barbara Wester.
I'm here to report on some monthly statistics from the Animal Care Center as well as the Grants Community Pantry. And I'd like to introduce to all of you the director for our local Grants Community Pantry. And it's, where is she?
I'm here.
Okay. Is Karen Baca. And Karen has been, been really an amazing woman. She has done some phenomenal things that hasn't been cared for in this matter since Reverend Ruben Thomas established the Grants Community Pantry. And I'm gonna let her give the report because she prepared the report. And I'm gonna let her go through this because she is doing one amazing job.
Thank you. The pantry has received local donations during the month of August totaling $10,993 pounds. These come from Walmart, Smiths, Brooks, and other donations, walking donations, Corrections Corporation of America out on Sacoleras. The inmates have a garden. They bring us all their fresh produce once it's harvested. We also have a fella that comes from Albuquerque and brings hundreds of pounds of French bread to us. And they're imperfect, they can't sell them. They donate them all to different agencies. Currently, we service 953 households in Sable County, and that's 1,778 people. The monetary donations that we received for the month of August was only $1,030. We, during August, we distributed 1,158 bags of produce, 563 commodity boxes, and 300 pounds of emergency food to the citizens. We've recently received a different van from Gallup. It's 120,000 miles newer and six years newer. And so, that was definitely an improvement. Does need to be painted, and there's chunks everywhere. The estimate for that is $5,000. So chances are that won't be painted. Sign Effects has been contracted to do the vehicle graphics, and that should be completed sometime this month. The City of Grants had donated a used furnace to the pantry. We're unable to find anyone locally that is willing to install that for us. So now, we're looking out for Albuquerque or Gallup to see if we can get somebody in to do that. We participated in the Grants Farmers Market Health and Wellness Event on August 25th. We spoke with several different organizations and several people, handed out our information, and collected $20.20 from the community at that event. Our walk-in freezer is in the beginning stages of being repaired. We, let's see, we had a small digital scale that had broken, and it was replaced by a pallet jack that actually is a scale as well. The parking lot has had the potholes filled. Action asphalt from Rio Rancho was contracted by a local business, and the leftovers, they went and they filled our holes for us. And we had a small chest freezer stock working on us. And due to the age, it was not cost-effective to have it repaired.
There are some things that are coming up in the near future that the Grants Pantry will be a recipient of, and some of that, you wanna identify some of those things that you do?
We have several different food drives that are gonna be taking place. Craig Shumpke from Mesa View contacted me today and said that they'll be doing a food drive in October. And then, they also do a big one around Thanksgiving, right in that area for us. And then, there are other entities in the area that will also be holding food drives for us.
I don't know if any of you have made a trip out to the Grants Community Pantry in the last year or more, but it is immaculate. I mean, it is spotless. Everything is done. She is an organizer, and she does a tremendous job, not only in organizing, but she also understands the needs of those recipients that are receiving contributions from the Grants Pantry. I should also mention that if it were not for the Gallup Pantry supporting the Grants Pantry, we would not have a pantry because the Grants Pantry cannot support itself. But we accolades to Karen Baca. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you very much. Did anybody have any questions for Karen or what she's doing over there? Thank you very much.
The other is the Animal Care Center. And I'm giving you the statistics for August. They have 151 dogs that were handled, or animals that were handled in August. 96 of them came from Grants. And so, they had abandoned animals. Some were captured. Some were dead on arrival. Others were released, owner-released. Four were born in captivity. There was one in protective custody. So there were total of 151 animals at the Animal Care Center that were handled. There were 10 that were reclaimed, 24 adopted. 28 were relocated, with a total disposition of 62. And I should mention that when these animals are relocated, they have to be healthy. And we have a problem right now at the Animal Care Center with distemper. There are dogs, and I don't know if cats get distemper, maybe they do, but we're getting animals that are being picked up that are sick. They have distemper. And consequently, the problem is that they had 38 dogs that were euthanized last month, five puppies, 18 cats, four kittens, for a total of 65 that were euthanized at the Animal Care Center. Now, I know that the budget for the Animal Care Center has increased to over $300,000. And if you lived in, on the Navajo Reservation, what they do there is they capture and kill. That's their policy. They get a dog, they capture it, they kill it. We're not doing that. But in our community, we have sick animals in our community that are being picked up and collected at the Animal Care Center. The total that were euthanized, as I mentioned, were 65. And we hope to have another vacancy that's going to be filled by the former chief senate. He's going to be there hopefully by the end of this month. And that will complete the people that they need there. It's a busy, busy, busy place. And it's a dirty job and a dangerous job. And so, I'm pleading with those people in our community that know they have a sick dog. Let them, instead of just turning that dog out loose, let the Animal Care Center know about it, and then they can take care of it correctly. Any questions that you might have?
Anybody? Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you very much for your time.
And Ryan, you already spoke. You don't wanna speak again, do you? Sure, I mean, you can. We got, we got, we got some time here. Citizens, to the discussion of our charter compliance, we are not in compliance, okay? Approval of the Regent City Council meeting minutes. I didn't see any corrections. Anybody else? I'll entertain a motion on that. Make a motion for approval. For your consent. Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez?
Yes.
Councilor DeSaro?
Yes.
Chief! You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, city manager, thank you for having us this evening. Well, here we are. It's been a bumpy road for a little bit, but we're here today. Come on up, guys. My two lieutenants. Lieutenant Jeff Mottis, my patrol lieutenant. Lieutenant David Chavis is my administration lieutenant. He's also over our detective program. Just wanted to talk to you a little bit, just give you an update of where we're at and where we plan to go. I gave big promises when I first got here, and even gave a couple of you a book and told you kind of the direction we wanted to go. So we're gonna be going in a community policing direction. We're gonna, we'll be fully staffed with patrol officers as of Monday, this next Monday, the 24th. I'll have 17 certified officers and one non-certified. He's a combat veteran, though, so we're hoping for good things from this young man. We, the direction we're going is gonna be all-encompassing. We're gonna be utilizing patrol, we should be working with our narcotics. We'll be ramping up narcotics, folks. Our PSA programs, our PSA program is, we're ramping that up also. So what are we gonna do? I'm gonna have these two gentlemen talk in a minute about. One thing we're doing is I had this idea about our PSA program. I know APD models, their PSA program, their young men and women that come into that program, they take reports. They're not going to violent calls, but they're taking reports. In other words, somebody says, somebody stole my car, somebody stole my lawnmower, this kind of thing. We can use a PSA to do that. And so, we have one young man now at the hospital. The other young man is getting trained. So to get them to where I wanna use them and be more proactive, because I like that to be our forum, right? To bring these young folks into, they wanna be police officers, and they do, is use those young folks, train them up as best we can. I'm gonna be putting them through our FTO program and train them to take reports and be officers. So we'll be changing a little bit of what our policy is on how they're gonna handle things. But these young guys are totally stoked. They're energized to come and learn about what it is to be a cop and everything. And they're gonna be helping our patrol program tremendously. I was approached, we were approached, actually Lieutenant Chavis came up with this one, but we were approached by a young lady. She's the manager of some of the apartments in town, low-rent apartments. And they're wanting to see if the city is amenable to entering into a contract with another PSA like the hospital is. So they pay the position, they pay the benefits. All we do is employee train and staff that position. And that would be tremendous for us because those three apartment complexes are where we get the lion's share of our calls, actually. So that would be tremendous for the patrol division. Right now, we've been, I've heard from one councilman that he recognized that our traffic program has stepped up, and that's gonna be happening. It is. So we're trying to spend some grant money there, but we're really doing that. Talk to my folks about the need to make more community contacts. You'll notice if you're coming in contact with them, they're being a lot, they're being very professional and courteous. Nobody being rude or jerk right now because that's the direction we wanna go on that. The high school. Well, I met with Superintendent Alton O'Autry, and he wants to see if we're open to bring in the School Resource Officer Program under Grants, the City of Grants. They've got money to fund, of course. They already fund the position of the middle school. Maxine Spital's there. But Mr. Autry's wanting to bring that under the umbrella of the City of Grants and then also staff it with another retiree at the high school. The reason I think this might be a good move for us is not just because it gives us more, at the high school, more people, and it makes it look like we're fuller. It's not about that, but the direction we're going, I remember one of my first talks with you all was this, is how are we gonna get investors into our city? People from outside, I mean, Mr. Taylor, he's invested into this town. Mr. Vazquez, I mean, business owners are here, here, planted here, stay here. How do we get, you know, investors from outside? And it's by cleaning up our streets. And so, therefore, the narcotics program, right now, there's this regional task force. And what I've told the sheriff's office in Milan is we, I can't see that we will be being part of that unless we put an MOU in place. And I've talked to the city manager about that, and I'll be talking more about that. But I think it's for our purposes, for the city's purposes, no matter what happens on that front, we need to have a program that's viable and moving forward. So I'll be, we're gonna be staffing that and moving forward on the narcotics aspect. With the narcotics, though, comes other things. I'm gonna have Lieutenant Mottis talk about this, the need for a high-risk warrant team. And there is. And it's not just, oh, we wanna be paramilitary. It really is. When you start dealing with the narcotics issues, you're dealing with people's money, and you're dealing with people's money that, we think the cartels are down in Mexico, and they're not. They're here. And so, there was, there's a death in Milan that everything I've heard from the state level, they think that that was a death that was by the cartels. Make sure that our people are protected, that we have the best possible trained individuals to mitigate the situation. It wouldn't be a full-blown SWAT team. We wouldn't be coming out to hostage call-outs or taking down this and that. But it'd be, they'd be trained as SWAT, but they'd be only utilized for high-risk warrant service. I think that's very important. Lieutenant Mottis came up with a great idea about, I don't really wanna talk about it here much, but just, not just utilize our narcotics agents to buy, do a little buy here, a little buy there, but being a little more aggressive within the community with folks that we know are felons and we know are committing crimes still with warrants and actively seeking those out. Because the folks, we have, we have a couple of different homes in town. The homeowners are very concerned about various houses on their streets. And we are working hard to deal with those problems. And we're gonna start, we're gonna start dealing, we're gonna start dealing with the homeowners and talking to the homeowners, saying, you rent your house to this person, and your house looks really bad. And it's gathering more people that are of that same nature and start dealing with that. And so, I've talked to Mr. Windhorse in the past about utilizing him for some of these things. And I really, really want, are the direction of what we're doing to be really an all-encompassing focus. It's community-oriented, it's called community-oriented police because it is. It's not just me and my guys going out to rescue people. It's all-encompassing. It's using Mr. Windhorse. It's using whoever.
Beer readers.
Yes. It's using folks that you wouldn't normally think. And so, honestly, the male, I talked to the male lady. She knows every drug house in town.
She's awesome.
You know, and so, that's the direction we wanna go on that, but.
You know, guys, and on that note, we have a house that the chief is aware of. I'm sure Jeff and David are both aware of it too, as I'm aware of it. We even had a stolen pickup out of Burnley County.
Right.
Spotted at this house around the plate. It was stolen out of Burnley County over here, by a dog in Grants.
And so, we wanna work with that and work against that, right? I mean, because of, once they realize, and they, I'm putting everybody in it, but as far as this continual crime, that Grants is on the job and we're, we're full-staffed now. There's no reason we can't become proactive rather than in the past where it's just reactive, going call to call and trying to play catch-up, but actually thinking ahead and kind of directing the way we're doing things so that we actually affect the outcome before they even start, if you see what I'm saying? So with that, I'm gonna let these two talk, and then we'd be glad to entertain any questions, okay?
Mr. Mayor, city manager, ladies and gentlemen of the council, good evening. Lieutenant Jeff Mottis, Grants Police Department. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the direction patrol's been taking lately. When I first started, it was a pretty rough start. We were shorthanded. Now, as of coming Monday, we're gonna be fully staffed with that one non-certified officer. We're gonna get him trained up with an FTO program prior to going to the academy. He may be utilized with another officer at that point. In the process of doing that, he's gonna be able to take the reports just like we're gonna train the PSAs that the chief is talking about. The PSAs are gonna be trained in every aspect that the regular law enforcement officer is, if with the exception of maybe not responding to the progress calls, in-progress calls. But they will be taking those reports. So that'll maybe leave a lot of the pressure from the officers, okay? The day shift operations, they've been ramped up quite a bit, especially around the schools. Those officers on a daily basis will go to these schools and walk them, okay? They will sit down with the children at lunch, have lunch with them. Last week was Mount Taylor School. This week's already been the high school. And they're just, they're just gonna start doing that on a weekly basis. Learn to concentrate a lot on residential areas during the day because that's when people are at work. Their homes are usually vacant at that time, okay? So their residential patrols are ramped up pretty good during the day. Of course, you mentioned Lobo Canyon Apartments, the Grants Apartments, and the Sunbury Apartments are high and call-bye marriages. So they're always walking those areas during the day and nighttime. The swing shift operations is pretty much the same. They're ramping up traffic. They're running a lot of traffic lately because they're utilizing the Grants. So there's quite a few officers out in overtime for that right now. The narcotics division is gonna start getting ramped up. With that being said, we need to get some officers trained up for a high-risk entry team. We do have some letters of, I guess, how would you put it? They're, they're wanting to join the team, okay? And we have six officers at this time that are willing to do that for the City of Grants. And by doing so, it's a, it's a lot different than patrol. It's a lot more dangerous. So when you're dealing with narcotics, they, on a daily basis, dealing with that stuff, they're pulling guns off the street, drugs, money. These people don't wanna go to jail. So whenever we're dealing with that stuff, these guys have to be trained and prepared for it, okay? So that's one of the reasons why we need to establish that high-risk entry team to serve those warrants that are gonna be coming out from those narcotics agents. Graveyard patrol, same thing. They've been ramped up on the business checks, okay? Those are the ones that are vacant at night. Business checks along with traffic, narcotic houses, residential checks, same thing. And being fully staffed, the manpower is a lot, lot better than what it was. We've had anywhere between four officers out till 3 o'clock in the morning. So that's a lot. so that's a lot better than two that we've had in the past. So by doing that, it gives us a little bit better coverage of the city and being able to answer those calls for service on top of, uh, being proactive with, uh, traffic control, running traffic, dealing with narcotics and stuff like that. Do you guys have any other questions?
Well, can we just hold-
Yeah, go ahead, Dana.
Okay, you're good?
Yeah.
Now, we could stake all the questions and not the questions.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of this council, citizens. My name is David Chavis, I'm currently the administrative sergeant for the Grants Police Department. Uh, we've developed, prior to this, we have myself and Steve Chavis have developed a community policing program for another agency we worked at. Uh, that program is still in full swing over there and still going very well. Uh, community policing to me is very important. Um, I may not be the tactical guy that, that Jeff is, but I understand the need for it because it does play into what we need. Uh, community policing is not just going out shaking people's hands, meeting them, talking to them and listening to them, it's actually getting involved, invested in the community. Everybody here that I've talked to is vested in this community, um, and it shows. And that's what we wanna do, we wanna bring everybody's opinion out and we can't do it without the support of the citizens and the council and our administration. Now, I know our administration and council are a hundred percent on board, we just gotta convince them the citizens that it's probable for them. A lot of the grants that Lieutenant Mottis was talking about, those are grants that do not cost the city anything. We're utilizing that because it's paid overtime for the officers and it doesn't cost the city a dime. So we can utilize those grants in conjunction with community policing and DWI, uh, step, all those type of grants and still get out there, pay the officers overtime for their time comfortably, but get involved with the community at the same time. In line with that, we're also looking at doing some, uh, events over the next month and a half due to scheduling conflicts with the Fiesta and, uh, say for New Mexico, uh, officer, the, the, safety, what is it, they did?
Public Safety Day.
Public Safety Day, we're gonna have to skip a few weeks, but starting this weekend, on the 22nd, at the Church of Latter Day Saints, we're actually gonna be doing a picnic in the park type deal, come meet your new police department and your city council, uh, involved in that is council member, uh, Vasquez. Uh, he's involved in that program for this weekend, we'll be setting up other times with the other councils as well, having events in the park, uh, jumper, DJ, uh, food, trying to get people to come out, get them involved in what we're trying to do and show them that this police department is here for them. We are now fully vested in this community and we want the community to see it. Again, going with that, like Lieutenant Mottis said, the SWAT team isn't really a SWAT team, but it's already highly trained, there will be minimum requirements, and I can tell you, I probably won't make the SWAT team. Uh, Jeff's a monster when it comes to physical and stuff activities. But you can guarantee the guys that do make that SWAT team, we are gonna be damn proud of them. And it's not a SWAT team, it's just a high-risk entry team. But that plays in, into community policing in the effect that, once we get the citizens' complaints of these houses and we start taking enforcement action on these houses, we're gonna need that support. So it all plays into the same, same community policing program. Thank you.
Well, there you have it, ladies and gentlemen, um, PD is moving forward to the future. Um, I totally believe that it is a great future for the City of Grants. Uh, I told you all when I first started that we would create this year a PD that you all could be proud of, that the citizens can be proud of, and I really truly believe that this is the direction, in this direction is what we will have and what you all will have. With that, that's, that's all I have, if you, if anybody has any questions.
Questions?
Of course I do. The speed limits. I, there's two streets, um, one of them is Mesa, these are the streets that I travel a lot. One is, first one is Mesa, the second one is Santa Fe. I go the speed limit and I am passed. I am passed by four to eight cars, not just one, especially on Santa Fe. I wish I had one of those lights, you know, that I put on top to manage the speed and just break in. Light them, because they're just, you know, the speed limit is actually the section I'm talking about, thirty-five. Blue twenty-thirty-five, and that is the area right in the, right where the city, employees have to cross the street, right where the tourists have to cross the street, that places, that many people want the speed limit to be lowered, but we can't seem to do that. How can we do something? And, and having a space and having a patrol car sitting somewhere doesn't work. Because everybody will see-
Unless there's a cop in that patrol car shooting their radar.
Well, no, no, well, they, they do, and, and I know in Albuquerque, sometimes they're outside of the vehicle with their, with their radar thing, but, I mean, I don't, that's an issue, and it's the issue because those streets are the ones that are too late.
Right.
The rest of the places, they just speed, but those are too late and it irritates me.
Well, I'll probably be hated for this, but I'll tell you the truth, I, I've thought for a while now that we should, the, the section of Santa Fe between, say, further east than Akama, um, maybe like Grand State Bank, limited to one lane each direction and have parking-
Parking on the-
On the street and then, and slow traffic down, and, and slow traffic down to twenty-two and five and create a downtown American Business District right there that would be, you know what I mean? I mean, to get people in that would want an open business where people will slow down and, "Oh my goodness, there's a," and they pull in.
Right. Because you pull into any of the places like code enforcement office or anything, you have to be careful getting out of your vehicle because you get-
And then I encourage those that wanna get across town quick, use the interstate. The eighty-one exit to eighty-five, have that as our, our, uh-
Speed course.
Yeah, go there to speed, anyway, I'm sorry, but, no, I agree. Trap, yeah, no, those two areas that you're talking about, definitely. And we're, we're actually hitting those, uh, our guys are coming out in force and really, and really hitting Santa Fe and stuff. The direction we've been going for the last couple of weeks anyway has been where we, in the evenings, we have at least two guys on the main streets of our town, I mean, what I mean by main is that Santa Fe, uh, First, Second, Roosevelt and then Lobo Canyon Road, uh, and running traffic on all those, uh, for that reason and then, and then the other two units would be in the residential, uh, working as a team, so. No, I, I feel what you're saying and we're, we're working in that direction, definitely.
This is a question for Lieutenant Mottis. You're gonna be heading to narcotics?
Uh, I will not be heading narcotics, but I will be heading the high-risk entry team.
Okay, so, when you make a bus, a small bus that hauls just out of the marijuana or whatever, are you gonna arrest these people or are you gonna wait until you have the big fish on the books?
Uh, they're gonna be arrested.
That's what I wanna hear, because I've heard lots of stories and, or-
That's what was happening in the past-
Yeah, that's the past.
And then we have stuff coming up, I'm missing out on-
See, what happened with, in the past was that, uh, narcotics, in the previous administration, they were either not arresting those subjects that were, they were coming into contact with the narcotics and now it's gonna change to, we're gonna make the arrests and then they can work out the deals.
That's what I wanna hear, I wanna hear you say that, that we arrest them, now we're gonna-
Yes, they're gonna be arrested.
Get that cape in from South America, okay?
Right. You got it.
Rick?
Um, yeah, just, uh, just can make some comments, I, I think it's a great idea that you guys are doing well, the way, the way you're doing it. Um, especially with the kids, because I don't know what's happened these days around the world with, with police officers and, and the young kids and the younger crowds these days, just the lack of respect, you know? Uh, I mean, you see it every day on the world news and I think you're doing about it the right way. You know, giving kids to respect what you do and how you, how you protect them and the community. Um, so, you know, I'm all for your, your programs, I'm sorry.
You know, I would, I'll tell you this, it's one of the things that we were just dealing with a, a woman, her nine-year-old son, he's having problems in elementary school and the school called up, very shook up, "What do we do with this boy?" because he's threatening other kids and he's very disruptive. And I mean, more disruptive than just, "I don't wanna do my homework," it's like really bad. Um, well, we're, we're gonna be, you said zero tolerance, somebody here? I'll tell you, we're gonna be dealing with mom and dad, if there's a dad in the picture, because they have to. If, if, you, the lack of respect, uh, certainly comes because the lack of parenting.
That's right.
And if people are not willing to parent their children, then, then we need to deal with that at our level now. We're not there to parent their children, okay, so that's not gonna happen, but we are there to hold folks accountable. So, and then also, I'll take off some comments also.
The answer to part of that question was, uh, just today, we were eating lunch at high school, me and the other officers. Uh, right after we left, there was a large fight that was gonna occur between, you know, several members that didn't like each other. Anyway, when I walked into the school, I mean, they say there's no gangs here, but when I walked into the school, I recognized this, the, this young kid in high school displaying colors from where I used to work in Gallup. And I noticed it right away, I said, "Well, I bet you this guy's from Gallup." Sure enough, he was from Gallup and he was displaying blue, which is a South Saint Crips in Gallup. And he's representing that in our schools. Well, the good part about it is the principal, I spoke with him and some of the, several of the other staff members and they immediately got rid of that child. So they don't want that in this, this school either, so that's a good thing. Um, gave him a little bit of other information on what to look for, that they're starting to see in here and they're keeping up to date with that also. So being at the schools and, you know, interacting with the children on a daily basis is a good thing. Unfortunately, we happened to just leave when this one broke out and like I said, we can't be everywhere all the time, but we responded quickly to that also.
Well, there is, there is concerns in the high school about lots of fighting and that's between the gang members that we brought up to my attention, and the only way you can control that is to have an officer there and-
We're working on that, right, Alton? We're working on that, man.
Okay, we're working on that, we're working on that.
What's that?
A drug tower?
That's a possibility.
I think that would be a-
We had one in the past, I believe. Um, but yeah, it'd be nice to have that way.
Just leave Alton alone, don't hurt him. Now, I, I got a question, uh, not a comment, I would tell you guys, that you told us when you first got hired on, that you were gonna be visible and you are being visible, daddy. I saw it, I've seen it the last couple of weeks, they got a car pulled over for whatever reason, but I had never seen anything before, to that extent, you know? But you, you told us, Steve, when we interviewed you, you know, you said that I would make myself, my, my office invisible for the public, and I wanna thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
You know, and, and the thing, you know, with Korean, I talked to a woman, and it's been a reality now, and I wanna thank you for that, guys, that's a pretty good question, thank you.
Thanks for the book, I enjoyed it.
Yeah.
I agree with you, ninety-nine percent of the stuff is in there, there's very little I disbelieve it. Um, I appreciate you guys, let that be known now, and I know that the patrol is on it because since I've been on the council, which is going on thirteen years now, I've never had a call asking me to fix a ticket. In the last two weeks, including out at work, guys booking through to get to the job site, I've been asked to fix nine tickets.
Oh, Jesus.
Okay, and all I tell them is, "Slow down and you won't get a ticket." That's pretty simple for me, so know that I appreciate you guys. I appreciate everything you do, keep it up.
Thank you, man.
Thank you. Moving on, resolution, offer to save low application, NMFA energy project, is that where you are?
Yes, um, in your packets, you have a resolution. Um, to refresh your memories, we've been working, um, approximately a year with Bill Kipnis, who's here this evening, who's with Siemens Energy Company. And Bill's been helping us really look at all of our aspects for where we could save energy. He's primarily focused heavily on our water meters and working with us to do a big water meter project where we would replace all of our meters, we'd go to automatic reads. Um, we know that we're losing a lot of revenue because our meters are outdated, they're not calibrated right and so they're not calculating the true amount of water that, that homes are using. So, uh, Bill's working on that, but he's also on the side working to try to look at where are we gonna obtain money to do these energy updates. And so typically, what Bill's gotta, um, convince the state energy department is that what, what we save in, or what we generate in revenue will be able to pay for any loan or amount to, to do any upgrades. So the two things we're focusing primarily on is replacing water meters and the other is, uh, LED lights. There may be a few other things that get included once we get going. This is just for your okay, so that we can thaw in application, we're not committed to any certain amount of money, but Bill's done some research and the NMFA has a much better interest rate than any of the private lenders. And so he, he recommended that we look at doing their process and thaw in application so that we're ready to get a loan for energy upgrades, we can do it through NMFA.
Anybody got any questions for Bill? That's why he came, is to see if anybody had any questions for him. Ain't that right?
Sure.
So are we applying for additional funding here or what are we applying?
We're gonna apply for, for a loan to help us pay for the LED lighting and the, the meters and stuff.
Yeah.
But our savings through doing this will cover, you know, the loan.
Are there gonna be any, uh, additional rebates with, uh, the power company that was re-living?
Right now, they're not offering you money to change out to LED lighting. Um, I did work, uh-
Bill, his mic.
Oh, the mic. Well, it's too tall, I can't even, no, no.
There you go, official.
Drive it in, man, okay. So Continental Divide isn't, uh, isn't offering you any money to change out to LEDs, but I have worked for the last year, actually longer, on, um, pushing them into a quicker program to replace your streetlights with LEDs. And even though that's not likely to be a project that we do at Siemens, um, now that you have Mark on board, he's very knowledgeable, we're taking up all that information and research and transferring it to Mark and, um, I think Continental Divide is going to help, um, the project in a couple of ways. One, um, help install them at a low cost and another to inventory the cheaper things they need. And so with those two things, I think you can look forward to, um, big actual savings now and, and-
Yeah, Continental Divide bodies of power from Tri-State, correct?
Yes.
Now, doesn't Tri-State offer rebates?
Tri-State, um, doesn't offer rebates themselves, so it is up to their local utility.
So that just means that we need to put something like that in our next franchise agreement with Continental Divide.
I think Tri-State was doing that in the past, weren't they, offering rebates?
I'm, I'm not really an expert on Tri-State's, um, programs and-
Is that something you would research?
Yes.
Give them a call.
I will.
See what kind of rebates they have, or, you know, customers are trying to utilize, you know, energy savings programs that are out there, the LEDs or, you know, you know, any other products, because I know they're out there.
They are out there, in fact, PNM has a number of them. And so it'd be nice to see Continental Divide, but I do wanna emphasize that, that, um, their staff there has been very helpful to you and I think that on the streetlight side, you can look forward to some good support from them and a good project, they're, you know, may not be me putting them out.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, as a customer to, you know, Continental Divide and Tri-State, that that might be a good program that we could probably get into.
I'll, I'll touch base with everybody again this weekend.
Do you know more about it, Martin?
Yeah, so not necessarily on the rebate side, but another way Continental Divide's been working with us is on the labor rates. Typical light replacement would be about four hundred dollars and, and we think we can do it for less than half of that. So we are working on updating the franchise agreement that would include LED lighting.
There you go, that's what I wanted to hear, that word franchise agreement, baby.
So this doesn't commit us to any amount or to even getting a loan, but, um, this would get us set up if we do want a loan in the future through NMFA.
LED lights, dogs.
Yes.
Eventually, I think that would be wonderful.
Yeah, we could.
The sooner, the better. It's better lighting too. It's better lighting, too.
Sure.
It's all better lighting, possible, so it makes, makes better sense all the way around. Um, on that note, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution eighteen dash sixteen fourteen.
I already had a motion there. Sir, except, uh, was it Mission eighteen dash sixteen fourteen?
Second.
Counselor Reynolds. Counselor Woskis, Counselor Lucero, Counselor Paliaplis. Next one up, Jacob's contract.
So, I believe Mark's gonna give us a few highlights on some things that we've requested to be in the amendment for the contract. Mark and I have been working with the Jacob staff for a couple of weeks, maybe a couple of months now, trying to see how our partnership can grow, and we can support each other's efforts. So, Mark's gonna kinda highlight some things we've asked to be in this amendment.
Uh, thank you, mayor, council, city manager. Um, so, all of the concerns that Laura and I have filled it, uh, from the mayor, from the council members, things that need to be addressed, we put it in contractual terms, and, uh, we, we were able to sit down, uh, uh, and, and negotiate, and so all of the things we've asked for are actually documented in the contract now. And so, uh, the, the last, uh, appendix that we have to, uh, hammer out, we, we didn't have enough time, is the, uh, CPI bonus, and so rather than giving an automatic CPI, that will be a, a bonus structure, uh, rather than automatic.
So...
So, um, Laura, the, uh, the packet I have here, it, it doesn't have the highlights in red, is yours? Oh, does it? I didn't see... Oh, it's further in the back, thank you. So, if you, uh, the original's in black, if you turn to the back, you'll see all of the amendments that are made in red. There it is, the bare deck, it's the colored package. Okay, two point, uh, nine point two, Jacob's in owner will discuss staffing requirements based on work scope, negotiate any changes to be included in the next contract year. We've had some concerns that, uh, maybe Jacobs might not be employing everyone that the city was looking for, and so we'll talk about that and hammer out some actual measures, uh, in the next contract year. Uh, two point nine, uh, point three, conduct regular supervision of field staff by supervisors and managers to maximize employee performance and efficiency. One of the things we've requested from Jacob is that supervisors that are in the field stop doing paperwork so much in the office, and we've seen that, and so, I'm out in the field, and so are, so are the Jacobs supervisors, and so, uh, we're going to continue to monitor that and, and make sure that's being done. The next article, uh, points out that the maintenance program, uh, the spare parts inventory will be reconciled monthly. That means if there's any, uh, missing parts, then Jacobs will, uh, will find a way to reconcile that. Maybe it was used in a work order, uh, maybe it's missing, whatever the case is, that we'll reconcile that on a monthly basis. Uh, two point three three, uh, we've included some language that includes water valves, pumps, and hydrant repairs. Uh, the reason being is because the valves inside of the system, the ci, uh, city system, they need to be operated on a, on, and maintained on a regular basis, and so we need to clarify that language. Uh, the next section deals with cleanup worksite due to water leaks within four days or sooner. This is really a stringent wording, but we felt like, uh, a lot of the city complaints were coming from a, uh, really, really dealing with this area, and so actually, uh, this, this is a big step forward, I feel, and the water leaks, uh, will get cleaned up within four days. Next, next language we added was to provide service to, uh, the PRV maintenance. As all of you are well aware, the PRVs cost a lot of money, and if you don't maintain them, they aren't worth anything. And so, uh, let's put our hundred and twenty thousand that we just put into the city to good use. The next section, we're adding the library irrigation system, as well as the zero escape grounds and the library lift station to the, uh, to the contract that's being added for no additional cost, and, uh, the next section is Article three point two. Conduct monthly safety checklist on each park, noting any safety issues that need to be addressed, and that'll be turned in monthly to the city manager. Uh, three point nine point two, Jacobs and owner will discuss staffing requirements, we've done over that, and then regular field supervision. Uh, the, the big one is four point seven point two. Uh, conduct monthly equipment inspections with owners' mechanics. Uh, Wednesday, we're doing a citywide shutdown. Everyone that rides roads or operates city equipment will be required to report to the MOC at seven AM. And we're going to go through every piece of equipment and go through a detailed checklist on what's required from equipment operators on a daily basis. Those clipboards will be kept inside the cab of each piece of equipment, and we're going to start taking better care of the equipment, whether that's a Jacobs employee or, or a city employee, that's, that's citywide. So, uh, four point seven point three, Jacobs will pay for damages to equipment due to its negligence. If they break it, they buy it. Uh, eighteen, Appendix E, E point two, is talking about the CPI performance bonus. And so, uh, in the past, the CPI was automatically awarded, that's going away. And so, we need to put a team together that'll talk about what those requirements are worth. Laura had suggested something along the lines of customer satisfaction, uh, work order completion within a reasonable timeframe, things of that nature.
Getting your job done right.
Getting it done right, and getting it done in an efficient timeline, absolutely. So, I believe all of the, uh, concerns that the city and, and, uh, city manager and the city council have addressed, I believe they're all added, and they're contractually binding at this point.
Questions? Sidney?
Nope.
Manny?
Rick?
Fred? I got a couple of comments. Over there on High and Nimitz, we just did that road, we had a waterline break there, and it's like Third World again. We didn't tamp it, we didn't cut it, we didn't do anything that the contract says we'll do. And that seems to be every time we dig a hole in the road, that's what happens. It's one of the reasons that I've been bitching about this contract, guys. Big time. The parks, we put somebody in the, in the cemetery forty hours a week, you can't tell he's done anything there, there ain't a single headstone bed lifted except the ones that I've done. I've got a problem with this contract, guys. I mean, they haven't, they haven't followed it for, for the twelve years I've been on this council. Why, why do we think we're gonna follow it now, just because we changed a couple amendments on this contract? That's my opinion, okay? And on that note, I'll accept any comments from anybody out there, or up here.
I got a comment.
Go ahead, Fred.
I, I'm not too versed in the worst one, if you're gonna find, because I just wonder what it'd be, because of new, new deal, you and I went out there. But I've been, before this, I was in the cemetery board for ten years. Let me tell you, guys, to get something done, when they see me coming, they stand up, you know? I told Laura about this, oh, you're going up by the police department, they can see from that chair over there, the sitting, that bench over there. Because they see my trucker here, because they look alike. They stand up, give them a little cart to take out. But, but then I started going the other way, and I told them, I said, I can't tell them nothing, but I suggest to them, hey, guys, come on, you know? You're making Edward look bad. You're making your boss look bad. And the, the parks is one of my concern there, you know? But, it's...
Well, I, I got something to comment on that, Fred.
Okay.
I took, I took myself to go to Berlin, Orislon, or Manol Cemetery, and I also went to Gallup. I'm, I did not see a cemetery better than ours, as well as the state church.
Never seen one.
No, ours is taken to where to come. I also went and got some training on how to lift those...
Heads up, stop that comment, kid.
It takes two guys, one guy doesn't take one, it takes two. The other thing is, Orislon that has, uh, eight thousand burial there, okay? Uh, I gave away the cards. The other thing I seen is they have, for the size of that place, they have six full-time employees.
It's a private cemetery.
So...
Okay, that's a big difference, it's a private cemetery.
But they still have...
They charge a lot more, okay? You can't even compare a city ranch to a private ranch. That's like a private-run golf course to a public-run golf course, Manny, you cannot compare that. That's like comparing apples and oranges, dude.
You can, the other thing is, uh, the other thing is, is, go look at Gallup, have you, anybody been to Gallup Cemetery?
Yes.
And what's it look like?
Well, it's not very well-maintained.
Have you been to Berlin?
No, I haven't.
Little boy, go look at there, I took the effort, I took a whole day off to drive to Bollak County, Albuquerque, and Gallup. And I did not find a better cemetery than we have here. The problem is, is Jacob can win, or anybody, or even the city. If you water, I took the initial, to find out, if you water the parks where they're supposed to be, we're gonna sink some of those headstones, because they are heavy.
But they gotta be picked up, that's all we're saying.
The other thing is, is that, um, through, through many years of, of the sand blowing through our streets, well, look at your yards, look how much dirt has built up on our yards, where you have to actually extend your, your sprinkler system because of all the blowing dirt that goes through there. You're right, you know I'm right, so, uh, I looked at everything, and I, I gotta give you guys, great job. I give you a big checkmark for, for doing a good job, guys. And I did take my time to go look at different places, before I made a comment to the state council, or the manager, or the public.
And you know how to raise them headstones?
Are you?
And it doesn't take nothing to do it, but here's the one thing, Manny, about that dirt that blows in around them, if you take a shovel and you just dig the grass out around them, about a quarter inch down, only takes a few seconds, and then you don't have to raise the headstones, Manny. It's real simple, when the graves sink, all you gotta do is go in and throw dirt, and the grass will grow up through that dirt, and it'll reroute, and it'll take care of it, but those things are not happening. That's my complaint, period. When we dig a hole in one of our roads, they don't go in and tamp it, they usually throw the same dirt back in there sometimes. That's why it breaks again in the same place, because they didn't take care of it in the first place. And so, we get four or five breaks in the same damn place in a month. That's my problem with it.
And I don't have a problem with that, Peter, because I've been to the one on High Street and, and Nimitz there. Uh, it wasn't the same pipe, it was a different pipe, and they showed me the section, I actually got in there and looked. Your, your men out there have seen me go to a lot of water breaks, and I wanna see if it was the same thing. And it's not, it's a different section of line, okay, so, am I right to say that?
Manny, everything right there at Nimitz is brand new. It was put in there when we did that road, four years ago.
Fucking High Street and...
High Street and Nimitz, right there.
That didn't look like new pipe to me.
It's all brand new pipe, dude, they did all of that when they put in, from Sal's Brothers was supposed to put all new valves and everything in there when they did that road, and that was paid for, and it was done.
Well, the pipe I seen was corroded and rusted, and it looked like it'd been there for years. How big of a section did you replace there?
Uh, one, one of them was about four feet, the other one was about two feet, and it was as vast as part. That part of the road was not replaced, man, and I, uh, we should've took some better pictures on it, but it was, it was, uh, one of the lines to the fire hydrant, which was not replaced, and then, uh, the other one was on the other side of two old gas lines that broke.
They're watching contractors. We usually have Lamatt Wilson, or whoever it is, that's what that's for, because they're not making it do it.
I know they're gonna do it, that's what's happening. We need to watch, we need to watch the contracting company, make sure they can replace...
Well, I don't get a vote on this contract, because if I did, I'd be voting up. So, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, did we all get down to ask questions?
Go ahead, we're sorry, Sidney, I thought you were ready to go. Go for it, girl, sorry about that.
Ready to go. Okay, so, about this new proposed contract, two people from the city worked on it, did you get the input from Jacobs?
Yes, we did. They gave us a draft, and then we went and came up with some things, and then we met together, I think on at least one, maybe two occasions.
You know, and here's, here's another thing on that, is, the perfect example is, we got a brand-new vector truck. We can't even train on the vector truck, because they didn't take care of it. Okay, it's brand new. Yeah, we gotta send it back to get all this stuff fixed, because we gotta take it and show these guys what's on the truck, because, am I lying? Okay, it's brand new!
How long have we had it work?
Uh, I believe it's, uh, less than two years.
Was it brand new?
Less than a year.
No, I don't think it was...
Same year.
It was used when we bought it.
It was used when we bought it. That doesn't matter, it was in perfect working condition when we bought it.
No, it wasn't in perfect condition, it wasn't, I looked into it.
Manny?
And we had some, we had some issues with the mayor.
Well, now we got a whole bunch, because they did nothing with it, and now we can't even use it. We can't train the people on it, nothing, because it was not taken care of. You know, and, and it falls back to, because Laura, any of you were even on this council, when I watched them wrapping the, the freaking backhoes out here pushing snow. I mean, it's, it's just been an ongoing deal since I have been on this council, guys. And it's, it's, it's always something, it's always something with it, and it never changes.
And you're gonna miss me when I'm gone.
Yes, I am. We'll try to get you to run again, girl.
That's another job, I know.
Yeah, so we shouldn't be out there watching it, but we have to now.
Mark, you're gonna be there, you're gonna be our eyes out there, do what's right, uh, common sense. And you report to Laura, and she can report to the mayor.
He'll be there.
And I, and I thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Pleasure to be counsel.
Oh, oh, we need to make a motion now.
Yeah.
Oh, I move that we approve Jacobs' contract amendment number two.
Second.
I second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Woskis?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Paliaplis?
No.
Next, city grants, ICIP. Can I pick you live, bro? Come on, man. You're looking at something we're supposed to be looking at, you got that, you got that oboe going on? I'm just checking.
Mayor, council, municipal manager, for you, is the, uh, senior, is it the senior one first?
No.
Okay, the, that's the city grants, okay, the city grants, ICIP, following one public hearing and many interviews. I believe I've spoken to all of you guys on, on these, uh, and I got a lot of input from many others. Like I told you guys the last time, I took a different route. A lot of times, we don't get as many folks at the public hearings, so I just started making phone calls. And it's interesting, uh, anyway, uh, you, you have the list in front of you, that's an actual Excel spreadsheet. I have the printout from the system, if you'd like to see it, it's the same thing. But, uh, anyway, just to make it simple, I put it on, on an Excel spreadsheet. Uh, it's similar to what I, uh, the last meeting, whenever you guys had a draft, there might be a couple changes. One project moved to a different priority number, something like that, but it's all the same, same projects, same, uh, but they might have changed their priority. So, if you have any questions, uh...
Did Sacklers move up?
What's that?
Did Sacklers move up?
We got either the wastewater treatment or not, I don't know.
Yeah, Sacklers did move up a couple spots, but not because of Sacklers, because of First Street.
Oh, because of First Street?
Yeah, because it's First Street and Sacklers, and we, and we need that phase, that last phase for First Street. Yeah, if it was Sacklers, it, it alone, it'd probably been more down. You are correct.
Donald's done a lot of groundwork, and a lot, he's taken a lot of effort to get feedback and really, you know, evaluate what's crucial, what's needed, what the public wants, what the council is interested in.
Any other questions for Donald on this? Anybody?
What type of park improvements are we looking at?
It's, it's a variety of park improvements, it's not real specific. The language in the system, it's just real basic, real vague.
It's vague, so we can use it just about anywhere we need it.
Exactly, yes.
As long as we use it a part of the cemetery, to football fields, whatever.
Yeah, I don't mind, I've been arming on some of these parks around, or something too.
Yeah.
So, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution number eighteen dash sixteen thirteen. Capital improvement plan for city grants.
I make a motion to approve, uh...
Hey, second. Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Woskis, Counselor Lucero, Counselor Paliaplis. Next one, the senior citizen.
Yes, thank you, thank you, pretty much the same as last year. Uh, however we did, well, no, it's not the same, so, why did I say that? The outdoor cooler cupboard, there was a different item there last year, I can't remember what it was, and then we added carpet. As we were going, walking through the place, you know, we saw everything else, but amazingly, the carpet's getting old. So, we thought, why can't we add the carpet, so that's why the carpet's on. So, carpet and the outdoor cooler cupboards are two new items on the senior citizen ICIP.
What kind of cooler cover are we making for hint up?
Insulated?
It's basically a canopy with walls.
Oh, okay.
That's a quote, that's a quote from a local contractor.
I was picturing like a cover on a, on a outdoor grill.
It's a, it's the large outdoor refrigerator.
That's what I was picturing, okay? You're talking about actually something that's gonna keep the rain off.
Yeah, it's not for the short coolers.
Yes, like a residential office. Okay, that means for sets.
You're talking about for the, for the walk-in cooler.
Yeah, for the walk-in refrigerator, refrigerator freezer.
Any other questions?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion for Resolution Number Eighteen Sixteen Twelve. For the improvement of the ICIP cap for the senior citizens.
I move, I move that we approve Resolution Number Eighteen Dash Sixteen Twelve. The fiscal year twenty 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 four, Boulder City Center infrastructure, capital improvement plan.
Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis, Council DeCerel, Council Paliya. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Abatement, Mr. Windhorse, hallelujah!
Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, um, City Manager. Um, we, uh, have on the, um, agenda tonight, uh, numbers eight through eleven, which are abatement resolutions for four different properties within the City of Grants. Um, the first one, uh, eighteen dash sixteen oh four, and each of these have to be voted for separately, uh, approved, um, is, uh, nine twenty-three East Santa Fe Avenue, also known as the Wayside Inn. And, um, and then number nine, Abatement Resolution Eighteen Dash Sixteen Oh Five, is one thirteen Washington Avenue. If you were to go down First Street, down to Washington, where that gas station is on the right-hand side, right behind that is a, um, a structure that has been burned several times and it's a double lot. And, um, uh, that's the one that we would be cleaning the property up.
Is that Jamie Trejo's property?
That Jamie, Jamie.
Jamie and George's? I don't know if they own both lots, though.
Um, Eugene, uh, Louis, um, Eugene Merewell.
Okay, no, they don't own both lots, though. Thank you, Robert, keep going.
Okay, and, uh, number ten, Abatement Resolution Eighteen Dash Sixteen Oh Six, is six twenty-eight Sergeant. And that's known as the old bunk house that burned up a while back and, uh, kids have been playing on the roof of it, they come over from the school. It's dangerous, transients have been in and out of it throughout the years. We'd like to tear that down and, and clean up that property.
And the last one?
And the last one is, uh, eighteen dash sixteen oh seven, three oh six North First Street. And that's over by the, um, the old Napa parts building. That house that, uh,
Right in the alley.
Yeah, right in the alley, that, that burned up at one time and it's been there. It's a popular place for kids to go in and play around and it really offers a clear present danger to the community and it needs to come down. Um, as you could see from looking at each of these files, there is a lot of paperwork that is involved in doing these abadements because we wanna do them correctly. We wanna do them in such a way that we have no liability coming back on the city. And so we are prepared to move forward. If you pass these resolutions, the next step will be we will send each of these resolutions to each of these owners. Um, the one for the Wayside Inn, uh, because he lives in Canton, Ohio, we will be sending it, uh, sending it to a process server who we've already contracted with. And he will be delivering it to him in person. We wanna make sure on this, especially on this other property, the other three properties are slam dunks. But especially on this property, we wanna make sure that all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed.
Questions, Sidney?
Um, the one on the, start on the one on Sergeant, six twenty-eight. On the, it's eighteen dash sixteen oh six. It's got the Sergeant address on the top and then in the center it's got the three oh six North First. Yeah, so you might wanna fix that one.
On the resolution?
On the res- yeah, on the resolution. First paragraph has six twenty-eight Sergeant, second paragraph has three oh six North First Street.
It's the title.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we'll make sure that gets fixed.
I'm gonna ask you about the automobiles together. What's the outcome of that?
We are still working with the lawyer on that. Um, the first thing that he said to us was, our, our city lawyer, was that, um, we would have to contract with a towing company and that they would just take the vehicles and then they would process them and do whatever they wanted with them and then we would not pay them.
Unless it's like an abandoned car on the street or something like that.
Right.
Same thing. Um, we would just call whosever up on our list and that's what we'll do with them cars.
But he's also checking on something, he's checking on something.
If they're not registered in our state and their license states aren't up to date and we're moving on that property and them cars are not registered, they cannot be taken on the street, so they're done. We can snatch them cars up and take them. Each one gets one, correct, Chief? Harry Garcia gets one, Keith Moore gets one, Austin Towing gets one, and they just keep rotating till every car there is gone. And they process them how they process them.
It's gotta be a net, they're gonna wear any other way.
Why? Because you wanna...
Well, there, there is, that's what we're looking at right now. Because these are not regular junker vehicles that you find at the side of the road. Some of them have...
Some are classics, aren't they?
Yeah.
It's important to be aware of, and I'm not sure, is, it would seem to me that since it's private property now, I, I'm not sure how the abatement ordinance, which, which kind of passed reads, but since we don't have a creating and maintaining public nuisance law, I think that we can't just take their car off their property. I, I don't think we, we can do that, but...
Um, actually, we can because, because we're clearing the property.
We're clearing the property. We're abating the whole property.
Yes. Yeah, we've just never had a situation where we've had this many vehicles.
A junkyard on Main Street. A junkyard on Main Street.
They're getting some expensive cars.
It's still a junkyard.
There's a, like, there's a couple Alfa Romeras in there that are, you know, and there are, there are quite a few cars, not to mention the trailers. You know, they have towing trailers.
Yeah.
That, you know, that...
They're haul hauls.
Now, Wells Cargo, and they've got something in the back and I'm not sure if it's a lift or not, but it's a big, big item in the back, so. We just want to make sure that we're doing this right and correct and we don't want...
Any questions? Let's start with sixteen oh four, eighteen sixteen oh four, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion eighteen sixteen oh four.
Second.
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis, Council DeCerel?
Yes.
Council Paliya? Eighteen sixteen oh five, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve, uh, Resolution Eighteen Dash Sixteen Five.
Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis, Council DeCerel?
Yes.
Council Paliya? Eighteen six oh six, I'll entertain a motion.
The motion, eighteen sixteen oh six.
Second.
Yes. Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis?
Yes.
Council DeCerel?
Yes.
Council Paliya?
Yes.
Last one, eighteen sixteen oh seven, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Resolution Eighteen Sixteen Oh Seven.
Second.
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis?
Yes.
Council DeCerel?
Yes.
Council Paliya?
Yes.
Thank you.
We also have four others that we are working on. One of them is on San Jose Drive.
And those ones are eight, nine, ten, and eleven.
Yes.
That works.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Robert. The next resolution, supporting the Section Two Thirty-two Investigation of the Effects of Uranium Imports on the United States National Security. I had a meeting with U.S. State Medellin Iran from up in Santa Fe and they asked us to pass this resolution, which I'm all about, especially when you look at some of the countries that we are getting our uranium from, Uzbekistan. These are not our friends, Russia, okay? They're not our friends. And we need to take care of our own energy needs in this country. And on that note, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Eighteen Dash Sixteen Eleven, supporting Section Two Thirty-two Investigation of the Effects of Uranium Imports on the United States National Security.
I move there on the Resolution Eighteen Dash Sixteen Eleven.
Second.
Second.
Council Reynolds?
No.
Council Woskis?
Yes.
Council DeCerel?
Yes.
Council Paliya? Thank you, guys. Next one.
Personnel ordinance. Our staff is working on our policies and procedures. Right now, we currently have a personnel ordinance that is about thirty-four pages long. So it's really all of our policies and procedures. So if we want to change something, then we have to go through the whole steps of changing the ordinance. I looked at what other communities are doing and their ordinance is about three, three to four pages long. It's just a guideline. And then we can adopt and change our policies and procedures as needed. And as we grow, as laws change, so I, I use Las Cruces as template. I figured they might know what they were doing and, um, fit it to our needs. So you have before you the, a new personnel ordinance we can repeal, Ordinance One Thousand. This would be our guidelines and then soon we'll have our handbook with policies and procedures for you to review as well.
Questions? Sidney?
Well, I have some. What, what recourse do the, um, employees who are given a boot have?
Um, right now in the ordinance, it is saying that we will have a grievance procedure, that we will provide a grievance procedure. That will actually be outlined in our handbook. So we met with our personnel staff, we have a team that works on policies periodically. Right now, we're looking at utilizing Gallup's policy. Gallup has a policy, if somebody is disciplined or terminated, they get to go before a hearing officer. And the hearing officer is typically, uh, an attorney who understands personnel law. And they would review the case, um, hear testimony, and then they would make a recommendation to the city manager. Yes, we feel like this is a justified termination, does justify discipline. Or they would say, no, we don't think you did this correctly. And the final decision would be up to the manager, but that's not part of this ordinance. But that's what we're looking at because, um, I think you're aware, Sid, Council Reynolds, that that Personnel Review Board is very cumbersome. Um, it's very hard to get that many people together on the same day to listen to a hearing. Um, the whole procedure is very expensive, uh, as far as attorneys and, and all of that. But we, we do think it's important and basically the law says that we have to provide employees due process. So we can't just terminate somebody typically, uh, if they're under probation, sometimes we can in that case. But even then, you really have to show that you've done due process and you don't take somebody's property right away without good cause. And this has, this has a statement in it that they will be allowed a grievance procedure.
Well, well, because I was on the Personnel Review Board...
We're gonna put you on a happier board.
I'm, I'm wondering if, if there is any, any, anything floating around there because the Personnel Review Board did not agree with the City of Grants. I want to make sure that you're not planning to just the Personnel Review Board because the members of the Personnel Review Board may not, um, agree with the actions that the city took.
No.
So I just want, I don't want any, any of those, I don't want to blur any of that.
We've been talking about changing that whole setup for probably a year now and we have a staff committee that's been working on it. I felt...
That's one of my complaints with the CAG, is I've been bitching at them for over a year and a half now. They help us with that. They have done crap to help us, that's why we have some complaints.
Because I know the review board, I mean, it's hard to get five people all in the same, in the room in addition to the attorneys all in the room at the same time.
Right, it's a very cumbersome process, so we, we started researching and we really liked what Gallup does. Instead of a whole review panel, they have one person, and it's usually an attorney, that's their employee, you pay them to review this case, but they're non-biased. And, um, they, they can look at the case legally, um, objectively, and give a good recommendation. But, no, it's something we've been looking at for over a year. And in reality, I think since I've been here, I think we've had four or five reviews.
I've done, I've done three.
Yeah, this last one was the only one that the review panel did not, so, um, so, yeah.
Just wanna make sure.
Right, right.
Manny?
Yep.
Fred? I'll entertain a motion to approve Personal Ordinance Eighteen Dash Twelve Thirty. Going once.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Order eighteen dash twelve thirty.
Second.
I second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis?
Yes.
Council DeCerel?
Yes.
Council Paliya?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Committee assignments. These are my recommendations, guys. Transit will stay, Rick and Laura. The CAG will be Council Woskis and Council Paliya. The Solid Waste Authority will be me, ultimately will be Fred Paliya. Uh, Civil Economic Development will be me and Laura. Council Reynolds to Main Street, you can be on a happy board now instead of a sad board. Okay? And the Personnel Review Board we're doing away with. Okay, is everybody good with those assignments? Are you good with that assignment, Sidney? You want something else?
What else, what else is there?
I could put you on one of the ones I sit on and I can go Main Street and raise it up.
That's okay. I'll save them.
Okay, you got it. You sure you won't run it if you really need to run it, girl? We would really appreciate it.
I'm counting down now, I'm counting down.
Um, do we need to, we need to approve those, help me? By vote?
Well, luckily we could.
Let's just approve them by vote, okay?
Okay.
Uh, the mayor's recommendations for committee assignments.
Twenty eighteen, nineteen?
Yeah, for twenty eighteen, nineteen. I'll entertain a motion to approve my assignments.
I, I move to approve the mayor's committee assignments for twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis, Council DeCerel, Council Paliya. Thank you, guys. Comments? Let's start with Laura.
Um, I had a business owner come and speak to me this week and it was really an eye-opener for me. It was business in Milan and they were really upset about the construction and how the construction in Milan had hurt their business and how the contractors, the, the village, whatever, did not try to accommodate their business and made it the least amount of, um, consequences possible where people could get, still get to their business. So it really made me aware and I'd like to be more conscious and have Donald and Mark help me as we work on projects, really look at how can we do our project and try to accommodate the business? Because, um, he was pretty upset and I thought he had some valid complaints. And he said, you know, nobody's wrong, the government entities come and talk to me and said they even care. So even if we just went and said, you know, we know your business is gonna be affected, we care. But there were little things, he had, I can picture, and he had attorneys and, um, there may be lawsuits, but besides that, he pointed out some things that you could have just slightly changed and it would have made the world of difference in traffic, being able to get to that business. So we get so busy and I told him, you know, we get so busy with projects. He wasn't complaining about the city, but I know we do that too and that we try to be more cognizant of how we're affecting our local businesses because we do care how it impacts them.
Anything else? Let's go backwards then. Fred?
I've got a couple of things, uh, I got a, I was in a bike county fair, Prue, in here, Labor Day. My grandkids have to meet with them. And this gentleman, two of them, as a matter of fact, came up to me, they were from the room, fire and rescue, I believe. They told, if you ask me, you're from Grant's, I said, yes, we want to tell you that, he's not here, the police are, I don't know, the rescuer, whoever went out there of that bad accident they had with the Greyhound people. There are people went out there and conducted themselves, A-one. They knew what they were doing, they were friendly, they worked together with everybody. In other words, they're like, they were, he said to... In other words, they're like, they were, he said to me, he said like, and I'm a volunteer, he said, those guys were working perfectly with everybody, they took charge and, and that made me feel good. I, I just want to tell you that.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, I dream, Alton is here and I talked to Laura. I wanted to talk to you guys, but, uh, I go to soccer games, footballs, everything, but we have a problem, well, schools have a problem and it's our problem too, I believe. As you sit in the bleachers in the soccer field, you're looking west. And we had a problem with the flooding there, and we corrected part of it, we cleaned the ditch. But that ditch, all the water comes from the Loma and it goes to that ditch, it goes right to the school. Every time somebody hits the ball, it goes to that ditch. There's no fence or nothing. And, uh, there was some comment, there was Saint Pius, of course Saint Pius got money. They said, huh, what the heck is this? The kid didn't want to go in, they're coming, there could be a snake in there or something. Down to the rainy season, a lot of mud. Is there any way we can help them?
So I think, um, the school's crews took care of it. I called Mark after you talked to me and told him what we needed and he goes, it's done. So we need to go look, but he thought the schools got their equipment in there and cleaned that ditch up.
Take a look and see, Mark. Alton, have you taken care of that?
We put a temporary barrier there, it'll stop the ball rolling in.
No, we're talking about the ditch with the flooding, Alton, did you guys get in and clean the ditch with equipment?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
So, well, 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 Mark, unless Mark, I gave them your little drawing that he thought they had done.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done a temporary fence and, and we're looking for something for Alton.
Yeah, my guys haven't gone in there with-
We got the, we think that, they couldn't have, they- The ditch is fully about, oh, I'd say about three, four, fifteen.
Yeah. And then my brother appeared out.
And he goes into the real San Jose, right behind the old administration building.
My brother appeared out. Rick, you got anything? Thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is for Alton also, um, you know, there's been a whole lot of things to do here in Grants. We missed our football team. You know, there's no home games this year.
We're working on it.
You're working on it?
Yeah, it's not accurate.
You know, I keep harping and I travel around the state, I see all these parks and schools, the nice facilities, they got AstroTurf, they got nice, why can't we get something like that for our school as a community?
We're working on it.
Are we applying for something like that?
Yes. It's in the works, it's in the works right now. As a matter of fact, Rick, uh, when I met with Alton last Friday, we discussed this at length and they do have the money to put in a turf football field now and it's coming. We are hoping for a homecoming game soon, right, Alton?
We're hoping that the field will be ready, the grass field, that project you're talking about, Richard, on the turf.
Yeah.
And I do, I know Eric Garcia, it's, uh, something that he wants to be-
Great, that's good to hear.
Alright. Anything else, Rick?
No.
Manny?
I've got two things. I want to let everybody know that, uh, we have a tour coming through here on the twenty-sixth, which will be two weeks. And they're, they're coming to Pontiac, Michigan. We're hoping that we'll bring in at least thirty to forty cars, no, thirty-five to forty-five cars to stop here and we're gonna feed them and Chris is working there, um, the food truck.
Yes, we've got three food vendors that will be there that day.
And I'm hoping that everybody that has cars, especially beautiful Chrysler products, help you bring them out, set them out and welcome everybody to come out.
Is that, uh, like your guys, your, your car?
Yeah, it's from the G C Association.
Beautiful Chrysler products, man, I got-
He's got a beautiful Chrysler product out there.
I got a beautiful Jeep, boy, anywhere in the mountains, you go, boy.
And then, uh-
Mr. Vazquez, is that on a Wednesday, on the twenty-sixth, you said?
Yes.
Yes, that's on a Wednesday. Okay, um, and we have, uh, Main Street and, uh, the gallery working on getting, getting us some, um, Native American dancers for that, for at least an hour or two. So trying to bring some economy into our community and let people know that we're more than just a bypass town.
You know what they're gonna come to?
I think eleven or twelve o'clock.
Eleven.
Is it eleven or twelve? We got it in a big-
I thought it was eleven.
And then on your, on your city website, it's not even on there anymore?
Yeah, it's on the Facebook page, as an event.
I didn't see it there, and on the date you had it was on the twenty-ninth and that's been changed. And I looked at it again and I didn't-
That was for the police thing, I had it as the twenty-ninth. That was my mistake and I did change that to the twenty-second.
Anything else? Sidney?
I have to thank, of course, one is I want to thank all of the participants of the nine eleven ceremony. Chief Hayes did a very good job, it was, um, quite well done. I want to thank, um, the police chief, the Grant Police Chief for his attendance and his, um, some of his officers. Um, the, um, who else? Next was the sheriff, Sheriff Mace and some of his, his staff and EMS and, you know, fire and rescue and, and those individuals. And the, um, the bank pipe player.
Yes.
So I really, I really like that.
Okay.
Hope to see you all next year. The second one is, although I can't do anything about it, I can, I'm going to continue to try and push for the wifi at the library. Okay, at some point there will be wifi at the library, I just want to, you know. If it's at my house and if it's at Starbucks, it can, should, should be in the library.
I thought you were changing the color of the bill cards.
Oh, no. The third thing is, this is now one year I've been trying to, I, I received a telephone call in June of two thousand seventeen about the speed hump for Homsong Sergeant, uh, East Sergeant. It's now September, it's been a year, they're not there. And my, our request went before planning and zoning in October. In September, the prior month, they put two big speed humps on what I call East Truman, where there are two houses on the south side and four houses on the north side. And there are two speed humps, one at house number one and one at house number four. Apparently it's who you know as to how you get speed humps. Need I say more?
You'll get your speed humps on Sergeant now. Anything else?
Yes, I got one more thing.
Come on, Manny!
Uh, no, no.
Always do this, dude.
I, I do that and this time I did it.
See, you lie like a rug on the floor too, bro.
I've never lied to you, I only tell you the truth and you just can't help it. I've been getting a lot of complaints about, about the mayor, okay, all over town. This is in regard for the mayor. Um, I gotta admit that, um, he's not there and a lot of, a lot of things going on in town, but I want you guys to understand that maybe the mayor approached him, so the time, the time that I am there, I'm representing the mayor in our community. So I've had a lot of calls that the mayor's not there, but when the mayor's working and he's not there, when the mayor approached him, so I am representing our town and our, and our mayor, just to let the public know. I'd appreciate that, Eddie.
And just, and just to let the public know?
I have a job!
Okay, that pays the bills. The city don't pay me very much at all and it damn sure don't pay the bills. So when I'm scheduled to go to work, I go to work, I don't show up at no events. I go to work and make money to support my family. That's that note. Um, I want to second what Fred said about the fire department, but not only the fire department, Chris, Laura, Kimberly, Harley, everybody in this entire city, Chief, Dave, Jeff, all your police officers, Donald, Mark Techema, Brenda, you've been a great add to the team. Everybody that works for the City of Grants, thank you very much because we could not make nothing happen without you people. Okay? The second thing I got is something for you guys to think about, we're coming up, and Sidney doesn't want to run again, but we're hoping to change that. Um, to think about a bond for, to do our infrastructure in one great big whack and maybe we could knock out a whole neighborhood or something, okay? To think about that on, on the, on the ballot for the people to vote on if they would like a bond to do-
Infrastructure?
Major, a major section of town. Okay, and I mean, personally, I think it's a tax, but if the people vote to tax themselves, then I don't have a problem. I have a problem when we vote to tax the people, okay? But if the people vote to do it themselves, I'm, I'm good with that. But that's something for us to think about, I think it's a good idea. It's been brought up to me by several of our elderly residents that live here that haven't had anything done for a long, long time and would like to see things done. Um, the next thing I got is I would like to see in our next budget cycle, um, look at expanding the library hours, okay? Later in the evening and on the weekends. I do not believe, okay, I do not believe that anybody in the city should work on Sunday except for the cops and firefighters. So I'm not about Sunday, but I am about evening hours and I am about Saturdays.
Well, we are open Saturdays and we are open until seven. Somebody wrote to the papers and you roll that until five.
Yeah, and you know, and that's what I, what I'm thinking about, guys, is like extending the hours to nine or ten. Okay? Um, and one of the reasons doing that is when I met with Alton, and I'm glad he's here, we not only talked about the police department helping out the schools and moving in and getting a school resource officer about the legacy pit trail, about the flooding around the schools, all these things that we are working on and taking care of, but we also mentioned the culinary class slash business class, maybe opening up the coffee shop in the library where they could pay their employees, the students, make a business where they actually have a business plan and they pay the lease to the city for, and then they run it. And that way, the schools can make a little bit of money, the students can learn how to do a payroll, how to make a payroll, how to make a profit through a business slash culinary class, because we're not having really good luck getting anybody in there. And, and Alton's, they're all receptive to these things, okay? And for me, just like the chief said, the first thing any business looks at when they come to a town to move here is the schools. That's the first thing they look at. Second is your streets and your hospital. But the schools are always the first thing they look at, guys. And we need to do everything in our power to help the schools. And we are getting a homecoming game, right, Alton? We better, man, I mean, I coached some of them players up there, dude, I really want to go see them.
Here in Grants.
Yes. Alright, I don't want to back them around.
You really doesn't range.
Um, that's all I have, thank you guys, but like I said, think about the lunch hour because we're gonna have to hire some staff there and that'll be on our next budget term. Um, and think about a bond, think about passing a bond, I don't know what we'll look at, six million dollars, whatever. Something, something that's viable that the community can afford. But, and then we'll put it up to the community and if they want to do it, we'll go that route and if they load it down, then we'll continue to do what we're doing. But if they vote for it and they pass it, then by God, we'll make some major moves, okay? On that note, I'll entertain a motion to shut the meeting down.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, on favor, say aye. Have a good night, thank you guys for coming.